Okay. Welcome to our study session, April 11th. Before we start the main event, which is the community development director. Talking about development going on in Milwaukee. I did have a question which occurred to me about when we sit in this room, which is about our new city hall. Is our diocese going to be cursed? It is.
It's gonna be second. It's gonna be curved, but it's not gonna be like a. Shoot like a.
A U.
Yeah.
That's okay, as long as there's some, as long as it's not flat, because it's hard to like see everybody and pick up on cues when someone wants to talk. If they're not a little bit. Out here, so I started thinking about that, I'm like, yeah, okay, great. All right, with that, I will. Turn it over to Silvio.
Mayor, good to see everyone. Got the hardest question of the way first. Joseph really had a meeting on the director. Was asked to provide a presentation on development in Milwaukee. What's going on in the rural wards, Armin Gay? So I'll jump into it and please feel free, we have plenty of time. I did try to put. Lot of projects in here. Or not both the projects, but there are kind of highlights and the big ones that you should probably be aware of, and where the other. So if I miss one, we'll really know. The reason that these are here is because. And the bigger ones to be aware. And I'll jump right in. I thought we'd start. Here, Mayor already said it, so. City Hall, I wanted to talk about this for a second because it's it's peak in the sense that this is a rare occasion. It's a rare movement, it's every. For us, this is eighty-five years of being in old city hall movement, so. Very significant. Hopefully we'll be in this next building for another eighty-five years, and I just want to give hats off to. Our city manager, as well as council that. The I said yes to this building because I'm sure it wasn't easy. But it's really gonna serve us well with. To give you an update of where we are. Demo is complete, a hundred percent. Shows the pictures of that second construction has started. So they're doing some framing, doing some HVAC. Supposed to be complete in August, September, we hopefully move in, fingers crossed, everything stays on schedule. Grand opening. Hopefully soon after. To be. The art selection committee has selected a an artist by the name of Pete Beaman, if you're familiar with. His work, he's a Portland artist and all over metro area, also throughout. Really well known for his his very engaging, can handle art. So. We're gonna be working on a contract with him as well as. What the art will actually be and will be placed within city hall. Question.
So yeah, so remind us, there was a whole discussion about the stairway and the art sort of light wall and that, where did we come down?
Light wall, we've come to, it's way too much. The concrete wall, that basically is the stairwell is. Big part of it, so we couldn't really. Structural integrity by creating glass or light, so. We've transitioned from that to. Playing, selling art in those spaces, the same like area where the light wall would go. In the stairwell, it's still, there's gonna be. Wrap around our kind of vinyl work throughout that will also hit on so far agriculture of Milwaukee as well as the history of. Previous city halls, it's kind of stairs to see. And that is part of the ship of requires us to. Similar to what whoever. We're sorry. But what it was. So that's that's kind of that, and then we have other artists that are in city hall that need to find a place. For one night only, the lights were on. We turned them off because we didn't want people to get. On whether this was live city hall or not. So that's that's the one night they're on. Obviously, they're. Demo, like I said, is a curve, this is the community meeting room is on the. On the right is the demo now, but that was the community, that will be the community meeting space, which is roughly about the size of this. Get the same feel. And this is on the left, those pictures on the left are what it was, office space and cubicles as well as. All there as well, so that's completely gone. On the third floor, I don't know how many of you ever visited to dance when they were there, but third floor is kind of where most of the operations appeared. That curved wall is gone, those are the, it's the back of the. It's the back of the bathrooms, which by the way. We did, we weren't able to keep in scope. The gender neutral bathrooms, so three public facing gender neutral bathrooms, two private, sorry. Staff face. So as it goes, we'll be updating those. Oh, it's the third floor and this more on the third floor, just. You can see it a lot better. So that's happening now, so just so you know. Again, hopefully, everything stays on schedule, especially with furniture and supplies has been. Their big development, now this is city hall.
Before we go on to that, I have one more question. New city hall, one was about parking.
Yes.
So in your parking study that we got a couple meetings back. It showed more parking spaces for the new city hall than that city hall, this existing city hall. Although the city manager said, well, that we have a lot more, we have to deal with more fleet vehicles, right? So. Uh, I guess that was one of my questions is what's the parking situation going to be for the public at the new city?
Yeah, good question, and then I wish I would have brought the. First floor plan that covered the parking, but essentially there's gonna be underneath the open air parking garage. The part that's north, it's gonna be fenced in, that's where nine fleet vehicles will go, as well as bicycle park staff. So we, and then also covered would be the handicap handicap spaces as well as seven guest spaces. And then, you know, uncovered, that's where staff are going, but essentially we'll have.
So you're putting up a fence in the cover part. Sorry to hear that, because I was really thinking that was a great space for the city to have winter events.
Well, half of it will still be up.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we always are looking for.
Coverage space.
Covered space in the winter time around here, that's the unusual benefit of that new city hall.
What happened was still, the largest part of it will still be. Historic city hall, we have signed the DDA with the potential buyer. So they're working through the hundred twenty day due diligence, which means they'll be poking around and they haven't. Quite a bit, so they've done environmental phase one. That's an exploratory demo, then their structural inspections, you know, things like, you know, you're essentially doing that, but too much. So finding out some things about our old. Which is. So some of these surroundings, thankfully, with these, these folks is that they are well tuned to historic. Problems they they bring up, challenges they bring up, so. We found. Just some, just some things with old buildings, there's asbestos, heating tanks, that. Gosh, but they're like, oh, this is, so, so, so. Things are moving forward, they're still doing their due diligence and will continue on with. Planes, but I mean, because, as you see in this rendering. I don't think, has the council ever seen what is opposed indoors, actually like the businesses? Seen the businesses?
Well, in a big sense, yeah.
I'll show you. Just so you see that building or that door on the left. Which it would be like Scott's office, Scott's office, that is gonna be, they wanted to replace that middle with the door. So that they would have entrance to the bakery. Front, they've been dealing with the state in the Fed for trying to get national registry. To keep this protected building, part of that is trying to keep that front facade untouched. Moved that door to the north side where there's a little bit of stain. Pack up the front side, and that will be the only change they posed any part. In going through and trying to get national registry, they also require, I wasn't familiar with this, they also require you to rehab. Indoor spaces, try to bring them to. It's original. So they also have, they're also gonna, they're getting a sense of what the cost will be to to really update the inside to some of the historic preservation departments. So the good news is there's been lots of money right now, investing. Because nothing's done until it's time.
And so they're eliminating the garage doors?
Those are still be built up.
Oh, they will.
Those be, yeah, they just haven't landed up here, just to show that. It will be. It'll be some ruining, hopefully, the townhouse. Be the firebags, and it's gonna be cut into thirds. It'll be screwing on the right, demos of pizza who leave the north residential, Milwaukee resident. That pizzeria and ice cream shop will be in the middle, so like where you stay parking tickets utility. Buildings will be changed into pizza, which is kind of cool. And then to the the north third, the keeper coffee, which is. Southeast Portland business bakery. Expanding quite a bit, as well as the second floor, as you can see, will be taken out by a little beast. Second floor mezzanine for. Sitting space, what's the name of the brewery? Little Beast, Little Beast, yeah, they're on division. Again. Did you? Yeah, it's, they're pretty good, so let, these are all letter of intents, right? So like, sooner the better, but things could change. The good news is that this, this potential buyer that we have already has a list of weddings. Of similar types of restaurant food industry, food service. Entities that. Promising, the office space on the second floor, so we're engineering and HR currently exist. They have been working with, that's kind of where we wanted to push much communal, community benefit as possible, so they're looking at reduce rate. That office space, working with a, can't share her name, but it's a resident in Milwaukee. Who is gonna be curating that space for our shows, community meetings, so there's gonna be. Thank God, I was happy to see that the potential owners will have, it caught the. The hope, the dream of like having some community. Of this project, not just to.
So you said that a pizza place was. Owned by local community member?
That's what I've been told, not.
Were they intentional about that?
Yes.
Like making sure that they were getting, putting Milwaukee into.
They were, they actually, before this, they were one of the most active people that were coming to city hall and asking for tours. And so they were, they were ringing in to come on in, take a look, see if you'd be interested. And there is several from Milwaukee. Part of those tours, so yeah, they're very. School. So this follows a similar timeline as future city hall, so hopefully we move out here in September, if everything goes well, they'll take over in October. And we're timed, and then they'll start doing TIs. Probably be up until. Late twenty.
So there, you said we've signed the DDA, and then. We actually will sign on the city hall. Over to them at what point?
Wouldn't be until probably October, yeah, until we actually. Transfer ownership and part of the conditions of conveyance, including making sure that. The store preservation. Sustainability. Make sure that they also. Maybe hopefully they keep all tenants the way they are, but there's also opportunity for things to change, and so any change will also. Any other questions about that?
Well, yeah, I do have a question, so you know. You know, looking at five, ten years or whatever. You know, businesses come and go, does the city have a role at all in those changes to challenges?
Great question, we negotiated this this piece specifically with them. Currently, it's a five year term, but any change within five years has to. So come through us, we give a thumbs up, I think we think it's two weeks to say here, but. We're not gonna be. The whole point is, yeah, we want like the like, we want to make sure that what they sold us. Stays at least. Future for that, so it'll be involved. No questions, does that make sense?
Can I just add, I want to make sure everybody's internal, like, this is the fact. This has been sort of like, I knew, so we are now going to report, as long as they hit the terms, the DDA just.
Okay, a couple points, I'm gonna spend a ton of time here. Y'all, we just talked to the developer not too long ago. I can say that I recently signed off on the community acknowledgement for the diploma, which will go to FEMA now, so. Three, six months, we're gonna be with FEMA, see what that brings, any changes to design or just anything, could be nothing, see? And they, the hope is they break ground in twenty twenty-four. Yeah.
Actually, can we go back to the city hall? So what's the expectation vis a vis the sculpture garden?
Sculpture garden will still be retained and maintained, it's still city property, so the sculpture will. Continue as long as we continue to cultivate or curate that space, we will, so need to maintain as well. Same same with the tree lighting, we're doing an MOU with with them to basically. You know, virus, right, for NIM, but it's a encouragement to participate, big city events, screen, tree lighting. Relapery, first one, it's like that, they have to be active. Yeah, participate.
And um.
Go ahead. Let's go, some of, some of you may not know about this. And that's for a second, which is an island station, was a property, a big property on the screen, this is lot zero three hundred. That was purchased from Trimente in June of twenty nineteen, the goal of four mile extension. Summarize in general. Since then, there was quite a bit of. Trying to figure out how to unlock the full potential of that lot, and through some of those assessments, it was found that access was an issue. So as, as you know, just like did this. So you purchased several axillaries that lot fifteen hundred. Some road improvements, infrastructure, basically expand on six. Access. As of right now, there's, there's certain site constraints, the brown bill, there does need to be some soil removal, some surface cack. Obviously, I talked about access, there's some density and limitations just because of, just because of the constraints, because of the constraints. We have the intent staff of some, at some point going out to RFP to see if there's any, basically official, see if there's any person interested. Knowing all these constraints, like being able to. Put project together, department along, as of right now, it's on full discuss, we have. But it is essentially a land bank. So you can make these two problems. Questions? Harrison Maine, some of the councillors, or may not, no, but the project across the street from city hall, known as Harrison. It's owned mostly by the city, there's a part of it that's not, I'm not sure, so. Twenty seventeen, look at the mayor, he's probably known more than I do, but. Back in twenty seventeen, there was a lot of exploration TOD developments, mixed use develop with Metro, so there's some like, there's some renderings of. Figure out scale, two to three stories scale, would actually go there.
There was some, I mean, there was an actual process in like, around the time of the recession, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Where, and there were three bids or three, there was an RFP, and there were three proposals, and then it must have been earlier, it was probably two thousand seven, and then the recession happened, and then. Fell apart, but there was an actual. Process, you know, and there was a committee. Yeah, there were three variations, three different bidders, including the person who bid, who built the North Main. Yeah. I don't, I didn't know there was that much done in twenty seventeen, to be honest, I mean, council has discussed it a few different times, but. And Metro comes every five years or so, kind of rattle our cage, but I don't remember the twenty seventeen.
Well, I can learn, I'm learning something too, so. You all came like a. This exploration and finding out scale, it was between two to three stories, eighty-seven hundred units. As it was some commercial retail. But that was all just. I talked to Metro about three weeks ago, specifically about the site, we kind of went to check in, just to see where, where. We're both like, no, there's no type right for this part of this project yet, there's something. Just good to know that they're kind of in sync both.
And so our plan is to let the farmer's market stay there until such time, once we do redevelop, right?
No, they would certainly like to stay there, yeah.
Obviously, yeah.
I I would like to see the. Uh, renderings? Curious. Happy to check.
Joseph, when did you last have time?
Three weeks ago. Yeah, they said, let's talk in a year. Kind of just a fun one, just, I just like to see the market place kind of changing. See, I find this business is up, still in ten bucks. Luna Ice Cream, this could be their their first shot, so pretty excited.
I have a question. The sir. You're very present.
Like a frog, yeah? I don't know.
I like my frog, yo.
I find out. And new seasons, I think you all know, they kind of said they're. Supply issues, so they pushed it out. Six months, so early twenty twenty-four instead of the end of this year.
They did update their posters in front, I was very happy to see that, they did change them from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty, so at least people are on.
It's, thanks to watch a project like this. But I'm glad I was worried that they were having other issues, but it's great that they're still getting.
Um, oh, go back, more coming, you can't tell us what more is coming?
Yeah, well, I can share what I know so far, there's. Commercial brokers won't share as much until their leases are signed, but what we do know is. Starbucks is looking to, okay, on the same side, to do a drive through version of. Fish place.
McGrath.
McGrath, they're looking to relocate to there at some point, because that was the intent. To change it up, so there's a drive through. Otherwise, more coming, this means like, the fact that Milwaukee marketplace now has new seasons, it's gonna start, I've been, this is the. Been told there's a lot. I don't know.
Has that been like the, the interest in the McGrath is just basically?
Really, as far as I know, I mean, Kinko would, you know, know as much as anyone, again, their good location.
Yeah, it's too bad, because it was a nice spot, I thought it was a nice spot, it had the green space and ducks and monkeys and everything. It's kind of like, what the world does not need, isn't it? Drive through, drive through Starbucks.
Possible that. They were really looking to do that, and then since it's kind of stalled out, so it's possible that maybe they like their location the way it is, they can move. Remote upon Waverly, hundred total apartment units. Close to completing phase one, phase one is. This building eighty-one. Here. Thirty-two units, so that is almost done. And they will. Move into phase two, which is doing the building just to last the, stay to thirty-two units, once it was. Triggered, then we start the next one. Nice expensive.
So they're building at the top of the slope first, that a common building practice? I would have thought you would build lower and build up.
I'm guessing probably just because they can plan out the. The full infrastructure, it's got to be a street layout, save money as it goes.
Project is moved pretty rapid.
Yeah. I think, I'm guessing it'll fill up. I guess there are some amazing views. So Makers Monroe apartments. Three thirty-four apartment units. Nearby, behind Milwaukee marketplace, next to public safety building. On completion, the link in the summer to be completed, they're gonna start. They have TCO for that building two, which is the building to the. Top left, Long Monroe, that's the first building that will be available for occupancy.
So TCO means temporary?
Temporary.
Significant.
Allows them to occupy one building while they're still construction. So you don't have their certificate occupancy for the entire project.
Okay, because if you look at it from the Monroe side, it's, yeah, like it's close to the identity, look at it from the thirty-seven side, and it's like, oh, no. So, but they have enough of an access that they can have people coming and going and living there.
Just so you know the, kind of exactly what you're describing, of how the occupancy will go is that building, they're pointing to the top left, that's when. The first, and then kind of along Monroe, it's all kind of like dominance, and it'll curve around, the last living to go will be the the big one in the. Substantial.
But they're supposed to be completely complete.
Completely done.
From the summer.
Stockton Station, this is a planning approved project over off of Washington Street and twenty-first ish, they ish, because it's really right on the real line, you can see it. Six stories, fifty-five minutes. It's supposed to be workforce housing, so they posed it being in between eighty to hundred twenty percent, and. Been put on hold, because they have other projects they're interested in pursuing. That's all I know. They're trying to shop, but some people shop, they're entitled, that's once they get planning approved, and try to sell those in that one's. Not sure, they told us that they're not looking for.
And what is, what is our code, they have two years from planning?
They can always. They can always, they can ask for extension.
Are they a year, right or?
It must be close.
It must be, yeah.
Interesting living, it's kind of interesting, because it's been circling around for nearly a year. Hundred seventy senior living units, seventy-eight independent, sixty assisted living, thirty-two military cares, kind of basically able to age in place. They have had extension, if you're extension, move some dirt even. Just all. And then we gave them a hard deadline, if you don't pay your permits, now then you're going to do the once we did that, came in, paid all the permits, and they're back in February, and then they said they're starting up construction, which they are, so you'll see some, I don't know, you probably have worked these but that's a, this is a good project as well, over by the community center. Across the street from another system. I'm going too slow, let me know.
I'm about to fall asleep. Pick up the pace.
Council negative is doing this. Um, Hillside Park, six hundred units, hundred percent planning group. Phase one is coming, it also receives CT out of phase one. Two hundred seventy-five minutes at thirty to sixty percent, so extremely low and very low. Because it's for restricted, it's just fantastic. They're going to have onsite support services, amazing, all wraparound services, very unique. Pretty amazing to have six hundred income restricted units, five square miles, twenty. Uh, they are currently working on finishing up their drawings, they're continuing to do some design work around utilities, public improvements. They do want to electrify as much as possible. It's all comes down to the money, they've done a good job trying to get different layers of
And their, um, construction next spring, is that the goal?
They're hoping, so the previous, so they were hoping to get their plans into view this spring.
This fall of twenty twenty-three? Oh, okay. Push back.
Justin, do you have an idea of what the increase in availability of those units would do to the waiting list?
But I could find that out for you. Yeah, so I'm sorry, end of twenty twenty-three, you're right, beginning of twenty twenty-four. There's some question, I don't know. Uh, the other project, this is, uh, so the developer that's doing the other stations, this is kind of something called Milwaukee Coreyard Housing Projects, it's two, two properties, kind of close to the bay. One on thirty-sixth, one on Harvey. Thirty-six ownership units. So two, eighteen units sold at eighty to most likely an estate. They're using a program to community and interest model to maintain this. At least thirty years, it's going to be longer than that. Amazing, because they're going to be ownership, so this is just, it's rare, it comes strictly. And the reason they're able to get there is they're doing some really unique, they started trying to just building material. Cheaper building materials, it's reduced cost. So that's the rendering they gave us.
And are they like permitted? I mean, they, no.
No, no. Yes, I think they're
Is this the short-staffed houses?
Yes, so I missed that.
That was
Yeah, so you got to see some of the other difference.
Yeah, yeah, it seems really promising, square footage space, and then the building costs are cut down considerably because of the type of with the methodology.
Those that know, uh, councillor Seven Jordan, I think, sit on the second advisory board for missed the last meeting. Should be able to see presentation by this developer on the types of housing upgraded. So would you, this is, this is Harvey, Harvey on thirty-sixth, right behind Roberts. Moving on, Henley Place. I'm going so slow, I'm sorry. Henley Place, hundred seventy apartments, under construction, legally is. You guys are going to have to stop. Thirty-second Avenue, and I raised this one, because this is right next to the Milwaukee Cafe, it was fully entitled to be an mixed-use building in eighteen parts. Uh, she tried to sell it after she tried to sell it, entitled, and then she allowed it to expire, so I put it up there because, no doubt. As far as what you see there, that's expired. It was if you know, they have an active demo agreement, they've been in some demo inside. I put that, that is the, that is from, you don't know who the buyer really is, but previous to purchase that property, we did have a kind of a preempt with somebody who wanted to do seventy-seven units. On that, on that property. And so I put it up there just because I'm guessing they're going to, somebody who are mixed use. So that's something to keep Army Park Townhomes, that just opened, drive drive to see it's brand new. Road Estates, seven lots, subdivisions, planted, there's no building, there's no infrastructure. It's just, it's just
So it's the lot on the left there?
Yes.
You can see the little plot lines, yeah. Um, and what's going on with the lot on the right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's one of the
Because we re-zoned them all, right? Didn't they re-zoned them all, assuming that they were in
No, Prague Estates, it's a five-lot subdivision, just two existing, three new, and some branch improvements, uh, there's no, they'll build the update. Personal housing project is in building right now, view, fourtieth Avenue, six units of cottage cluster, so this will be, we go, like, it's a personal housing company. Towns and providing, uh, just of, of interest, they're writing one off. Because we require
I'm sorry, you're saying they're requiring more than they were required, they're
They're putting more in than Uh, the likely second housing project is this off of Fifty Second, it's five minutes of townhouse, it's in planning right now. So it's Fifty Second and Jackson. What was the other one? The cottage closer, uh, ten to two seven one southeast quarter. Then I added some ones that are in the three hours, I think just, these things could change. It's just important on the middle housing front, two kind of small projects coming through. Ones are kicking around. Here's one of them, this is off of Thomas, there, towards Waverly. Eleven units of townhomes, they could also do a more tiny. They only came to us with eleven.
Have they demolished that old house? I know it just had a fence up around.
I don't know if there's been a development. It will go. Another one, preempt, off of Stanley. Thirty-eight units cottage cluster. Monroe Street, fifty-six oh six, twenty-two lot subdivision, four plus. So we're looking at eighty-eight units, so really substantial. Again, preempt, all that, things can change.
Is that the, um, that's an old farm, that's like behind the houses on Yeah, you're going too fast, actually.
Doing just for I didn't think I'd have that time, but like, done it thirty minutes.
But can you go back to the one before that, the Stanley one?
Interesting thing with middle housing, so we'll find out as much we can end up requiring as far as infrastructure. Access, that proportionality is something that every city is going to have to deal with. Something we can actually require. Stretch it out, because, and there's, like, this one's a great example, eighty-eight units. Four, four plus about each subdivision, subdivision lot. And it's not, there's difference between twenty-two single eighty. Capacity size from transportation, um, stormwater, wastewater, all that. Uh, this is the old middle housing project, it's preempt, only, we're also doing a transportation impact study, this is Seventeenth. The northern end of our boundary, over by Waverly. Forty-two unit cottage cluster. So, they're pretty big development. Go back, yeah, sorry. It's kind of, I think, good for the middle housing stuff, I could, so I should uh, Murphy's side, just in case. Two of you are familiar with it. So we're Hillside, just to the north. Side park. So it's one of the last very large piece city. There's been lots, it's an opportunity side, there's been lots of conceptual work done on this, there's been lots of talk. Been, I guess, interesting. There's a lot of interest, there's a lot of development.
Has there been anything in the last year?
I've had a lot of, I've had four conversations with folks, going, hey, it's fun, yes, talk to the owners, I've talked to the owners, they said they'd be interested in possibly doing something.
I was gonna say, when Denny was still here, we had a big box interest there, so.
They named names?
Uh, yeah, it has an orange on it. Um, I just don't see how you, I mean, that intersection is already bad, and with six hundred units of housing in that hillside, it's going to be worse, and so I don't know how somebody develops here. It's an interesting, it's going to be an interesting access and traffic.
That's just, with a sense of where things are happening, the light blue are things that are either preempt version or we kind of know are out there. The red ones are active projects, you're watching them appear.
No, you didn't mention anything on Johnson Creek Boulevard. Yeah, there's a big parcel, two acre parcel at Forty Second and Johnson Creek. That the guy cleared all the trees off of last year before our tree code is passed, do you have any?
Yeah. Little check that, I put everything I can find. It's in, come across for us.
And we've seen a couple of things come in for businesses over in that area. There's some new business construction going on, or they're just new businesses occupying old
Let's see, something new tenants.
So this is, uh, you know, from my perspective, encouraging, especially on the middle housing front.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we spent the past few years on comprehensive plan and code adoption, and we were you know, had our fingers crossed and said, you know, if we build it, they will come, and it looks like they're coming. So all of these aren't going to pan out immediately, gosh, there's a lot of activity.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very encouraging.
Few more slides.
Um, okay, yeah, yeah, no, 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 but, but, um, one you didn't mention was the Providence have a senior housing next to them that they didn't get the funding for or whatever.
Pretty much.
Have they lost their entitlement? They still have a life.
Question, not sure.
I mean, definitely let them know if they're in danger, because I do sense they, I mean, they kind of said that when they came and spoke to us. I guess they spoke to council in December, to the last council, but it did sound like they were going to try to revive it, so.
Yeah. They might become, I'd be good.
Yeah, it was low in council.
Yeah, you remember that, that was a lot of a year. Maybe half a year. That's I think, yeah, so it's supposed to be, it sounds like, it might be, be good, just just a sense of other side of the ball more, so finding side of the building permits where they've been over the last twelve years. Obviously, twenty twenty-three is the year to date. Um, it's been pretty, that's the that line, just kind of, trend line is pretty steady, moving upward direction, mostly. I think what is even more interesting is when I go to the inspection side, you can see the trend line shift to more more upwards, which, this goes to, this goes to show you that even though permits might be lower, when you're, the complexity of the project, totally you've been doing lots of permits for additions, let's say, but then you get two or three big apartment complexes, excuse project, inspections turn into something like ten to twenty-two. We're rocking on, and it's just kind of uphill together, as you all know, so statewide, hasn't been building answers. I don't see it unless there's a serious downturn, like, push is going to be pretty delicious. Where we're going, what I'm seeing. So that's it, thank you for hanging.
So are any of those housing bills? I mean, I, I mean, there's money going to affordable housing. Um, would they maybe, would there be funding to help some of these middle housing things, um, to fruition?
As far as money?
Yeah. It's As a state.
I would guess, just because there's so much for possible, it's going to be state, they were actually income restricted projects. That could be the case. I don't, I don't know, sure.
Questions?
Uh, yes, can I? I can, I have one paper, uh, I did write this down for this part, but I didn't sum up, I give it, you know, the developments, I mean, you could have sent me that. Whatever, whatever's easier for you, just so I can, anytime I want to go back and check. I wrote them down, I'm sure it was, oh. Happy to send this to you. Yeah. Can't share with anybody. Just kidding.
No problem, me.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'm happy to send it to all of you. Questions?
I love that sweater. I like it.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I'm with councillor Massey.
Well, yeah, I'm with councillor Massey and I think it's exciting how much middle housing is. Slipping around, so it would be great to see. See some of that comes to fruition.
There's a couple developers that are. Looking at middle housing projects, the ones I've shown you, but there's no doubt if they can make it work. All kinds of tests.
Yeah, I mean, we have a couple of other. I mean, we have one other large site that comes to mind, which is the Christmas tree.
Right? Yeah.
Um, where? I happen to know the, one of them. One of the owners of that, and I told him I thought that would be great.
He wants.
Well, his response is my brother's student, all of it, so. Yeah. Um.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Oh, so I have a script to read. After the study session, council will meet in executive session pursuant to order revised statutes one ninety two. Six six zero two H. You consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.